It's six o'clock, and this time I call a regular meeting for Perry City Council Laws Twenty-One, Two Thousand Eighteen to order, please. Item Three is the invitation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you are able, please rise. I'd like to call on Councilman Robert Dunn. He really came with great father fellowship for the invitation.
That's our head, please. Father God, we come now in the name of Jesus. We come listening up your name. We want to thank you now, Father God, as we have gathered here together tonight, Father, the answer to this issue has to be made. I just pray for your wisdom, that you guide each one of us as we come together. I want to thank you for the city, Lord, and the things that we do to help the community. I ask you to bless us now and give us the wisdom that we need to go forth in a powerful way. We do thank you and we praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to call on Councilman Robert Dunn. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item Four, recognition of presentations. Councilors, forbearance, I'd like to debrief from the agenda briefly and call on Mr. Scott Cox. Here he is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. I just wanted to recognize one of our students. We're with the Perry Youth Leadership, which is a Chamber of Commerce function, an education function, and we have Perry Youth Leadership that are eleventh graders from three different schools. We have veterans, Westfield, and Perry High School. And one of our students is here today, Jordan Rogers, and this is part of her homework.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Jordan.
Thank you.
You're taking notes now, right?
Yes, sir.
Item Four A is the presentation, Mayor and Council, by Mr. Avery Genova. Genova.
Thank you very much, and if you don't mind, I'll stand here where I can fall on this table if I have to. And this is only a presentation. It is not, and it's a presentation of an offer, it is not anything to decide tonight. And I'll explain that later. I introduce myself as I go along, so please bear with me. And I turned ninety last week, and so if there are any questions, please hold them because I might change my train of thought and I might forget where I am. Anyway, you all know the Agri Center over there, and there's a wonderful piece of sculpture there of a farmer, a boy, and a mule. Well, that's a tribute, and you wouldn't believe it, but back until after the Second World War, up until maybe seventy years ago, agriculture was done primarily in Georgia by a mule and a man and a plow. And that statue over there, as a tribute to that lost generation, was done, as you know, by our counselor Larry Walker. And he says you've got to refer to that thing as a mule and a farmer, not a farmer and a mule. And it was based on the fact that his granddaddy up around Sparta, after World War II, was still plowing with a mule and an iron plow. Now, that's a great tribute, and that statue is in bronze, and it's a beautiful thing, and it's going to last oh, two, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred years. So, come back and see it. Now, you know downtown at the, downtown in the, what's it called, post, not the post office, but the courthouse.
Courthouse.
The what?
The old courthouse.
The old courthouse, thank you. I have little lapses, you know. There is that terrific statue of a Confederate soldier. Now, that was done in the nineteen twenties, I think, and it's a tribute, and it's stood there over almost a hundred years now. And fortunately, it hasn't deteriorated like some have with acid rain, but that is a tribute, not to a plantation owner, not to a slaveholder, but to a farmer who left his shack, his family, his kids, four or five kids, took his rifle, his Stahl-Dill from the Revolutionary War probably, and he left his mule, and he went to war. He was not fighting for slavery, he was fighting for his land. And back then, the loyalty was more to the state than to the nation. Now, I have taken that statue and converted it into something that I want to offer to the city council as a possibility of its purchasing. Now, I won't get into those details right now, but let me show it to you. There was a famous general, and I'll give this to you, Mr. Mayor, there was a famous general in the Confederacy who was better than Robert E. Lee, when you get right down to it, and that was James Longstreet. And he was a Georgian, and he was buried up there somewhere in North Georgia. I forget the details right now, I'm a memory failing to remember. But he said some remarkable words after the war. He was a classmate of General Grant's, and as they were discussing things after Lee's surrender, he said, "Why do men fight who were born to be brothers?" Now, isn't that remarkable, a remarkable healing? Well, I want to show you what that caused me to do, if I can move this thing. That's all right, stay where you are. You may have to stand up, ladies and gentlemen, but this is my tribute to that father soldier almost quarter of a million died in the battle fighting for the land, not for slavery. And they gave it all up, and this is a tribute to them, and as you see, the Confederacy is overcome by the Union. And on the pedestal, I have put, under, "One Nation Under God," and I've put the banner, the words of James Longstreet here. "Why do men fight who were born to be brothers?" So, I'll show it to you all. What do you think? Isn't that a tribute to the healing?
Yes.
Now, who am I, and why did I do this? Well, God knows why I did it. Sixty-seven years ago, I was in North Korea shooting North Koreans. I was a twenty-three-year-old second lieutenant in the Marine Corps, and I'd been fighting for a whole year against the North Koreans, and we were pulling back for the peace talks. Now, in my career, I have majored in art. I've been an artist all my life, been a professional artist. I graduated from Princeton with a degree in art history, went to the University of Florida and got a master in fine arts degree. I worked mostly in television and advertising in New York City back in the heydays of New York, and I was a television producer, director, art director, and you name it, and I've been there after all that, it's seven decades. So, I am a confirmed artist. Many of my works are in museums in the Pentagon, in the Naval Academy, in the Naval Institute, the Marine Corps Museum, the Army Museum, and even over in England in the Royal Marine Museum. So, those are my credentials, and I retired in Perry about eleven years ago, and my wife and please and I live in House and Springs Community. And aside from watching television all the time, I still paint. I painted this about, it took me five months to do this. I did it all original, no copies and photographs. Well, I photographed ten, but then I freehanded it. So, I did this, and I've got another one I'm working on now that I wouldn't dare show you. It belongs in a bar. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't front the dignity of this audience of any of that. And the beauty of this is that if the council and the city get together and do purchase it, posters can be made of it. And I think, Ellie, you could sell a whole bunch in the museum. You think? Maybe. Well, anyway, so, gentlemen and ladies of the council, I suggest, Mr. Mayor, that if you will form an ad hoc committee of yourself, because you have banking and, what is it, accounting experience, and Mr. Walker, you have entrepreneurial businessman with sales ability, and Lee Gilmore, you have managerial, budgeting, and long-range planning in your background, and I suggest, sir, if you wouldn't mind my gracious, that if you formed an ad hoc committee with Mr. Halbert, and you're not Mr. Halbert today, and we meet at a later date and discuss and negotiate a fee, and I promise you, it would be under a million dollars. Because I would, I would like very much to bring this back and prevent it, and we talk it over and see if this city might have this, because when you build a new city hall, right, this would be a wonderful thing in the entranceway for the new building. I leave my, I state my case, and I leave it to you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, if I can make my way out of here, I'll go, I guess I'll go this way. Thank you, Ellie. That's all right. Would you? Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item Four B is an introduction of being Battalion Chief.
Good job, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How you doing, Paul? Good.
He's out there somewhere.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, after following an extensive assessment process, Captain Monday was selected for promotion to Battalion Chief, and tonight we want to honor him by pinning on his collar brass, but I have something to read first. If I can have everyone stand, please. Attention to orders. As approved by the City of Perry Mayor and Council and the Office of the City Manager, be advised of the following. Whereas Charles Monday began his career with the Perry Fire Department on twenty-eight March two thousand and five, and whereas Charles Monday has proven his abilities as a fire captain and company officer, leading troops during the daily duties of firefighters and into the battle against the ravages of fire, and whereas Charles Monday has demonstrated his skills and nature as a forward-thinking and disciplined employee, becoming an inspiration to his fellow coworkers. Now therefore be it resolved that effective August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Captain Charles Monday is promoted to the chief officer rank of Battalion Chief assigned to Station One A-Shift of the Perry Fire Department. Ladies and gentlemen, Battalion Chief Charles Monday. At this time, we're going to have his wife and children come up, we're going to introduce them and have them pin on his collar brass.
My son Roman, my daughter Nyla, my son Dallas. Don't just jam with him with the mark. I promise he'll stick.
Just thank you all for the support, and it's just a privilege to serve the city.
All right. Chief, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any citizen who's present who wish to address Council at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm Robin Jackson, I'm sitting up here, and I'm still taking on as far as the Hilltop area, as far as you know, there's only one way in and one way out. And just while I go, I guess it shows some evidence that as to what may happen, when you have a large amount of rain falling, the field across when the school is flooded, and eventually that had to come from rain, it probably flooded the whole area all the way across there, and then one couldn't be able to get in and out from the Hilltop area. So, my suggestion, I guess, what I presented to the board, to the city council several years ago, as far as many, given another entrance, Broad Street, nine, and where the school, that was, that enters there. They said that Jim Mason was in the problem, they were coming down to Jim Mason now, so there's no problem with Jim Mason. On the thing, me now with the city council, not with the city council, and the Board of Education get together, maybe try to connect that road, Broad Street, to the new entrance, and you would be able to have a one-way in, one-way out, at least two-way in and two-way out. And that would be, like I said, hopefully that you all would take that up into consideration because, like I said, not only affecting the citizens up there, but in case the school buses try to come by there or whatever, if it flooded down here, they won't be able to get in there. Police Department, Fire Department, no one else can get into that area flooded, that is only one way in, one way out. So, we want to maybe take that into consideration. And again, too, I have to mention about the parking that's put down time here, when you move the city hall down there, it's terrible out there now, and I can imagine how it's going to be once you all get down and sit up here, that's put down time area. And the last thing, like I said, not to be negative to this young man, as far as presenting it, Confederate emblem, I think that the city needs to be, which is still, as far as in the healing process, and not to be bringing things like that, as far as putting the city hall, as far as especially in the entrance, and if at all possible, either you rest a Union statue down here where you got the old courthouse there, or take the other one down, one or the other, because like I said, that's not healing this city up here, which we, and I was wanting to give the mayor and the city council a, an excellent job, and I want to continue to do the excellent job, but as far as things like that, that's not helping the nation at all, or this city up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anyone else like to address Council? Item Six is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA Section Thirty-Six, Act Sixty-Seven A dash three C. Six A, we are being asked to consider retaining the operation of fourteen point zero five zero mills, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, per the requirement of state law, this is your second of three hearings for you to keep the mill operating at fourteen point zero five.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions to Mr. Gilmore regarding this item? There are none. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for the retention of the fourteen point zero five zero mills as described? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against the retention of the fourteen point zero five zero mills as described? This public hearing is now closed. Item Seven is a review of minutes. Item Seven A, Council, your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the August sixth, two thousand and eighteen work session, the August seventh, two thousand and eighteen pre-council meeting, the August seventh, two thousand and eighteen council meeting, the August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen special meeting, and the August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen special meeting. Please note, Councilmember Robert Jones was absent from the August sixth council meeting. Council, at this time, I would like to add a motion that we approve these minutes as presented.
Sure.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any additions, resolutions, changes, or discussion regarding these minutes? There are none. All of the favor raised your hand? All of opposed, same side? Any interest in this?
Yes, Mayor, I stand in view of my absence on Monday, August sixth, two thousand and eighteen, at open house. Any good teacher come out in this open house?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. The motion passes. Please let the record in effect, Mr. Jones, your statement. Item Eight is old business. Item Eight A, or ordinances for a second reading and adoption. Item Eight One is the second reading of an ordinance for the rezoning of property from R dash three, multifamily residential district to OC Office Commercial District. This property is located at fourteen zero one Swift Street, tax map number zero P zero two hundred, zero zero one thousand. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this request, as you mentioned, is for the rezoning of property. This property is currently zoned R three, which is a multifamily residential classification. It does have a special exception to allow a private school for music, teaching music lessons. The applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to OC, which is Office Commercial District. After review of the criteria, the staff recommend to deny the request. Planning Commission also recommend to deny this request.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions with Mr. Wood regarding this item? If not, Council, are you prepared to take action on this item?
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to accept planning and zoning and his recommendation to deny this request.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? There are none. All of the in favor, raise your hand. Motion here's an item. Thank you. Item Eight A Two is the second reading of a text amendment relating to multifamily uses and neighborhood meetings. Mr. Wood?
Yes, Mayor. This request has been modified based on the original intent of the concern that large multifamily developments could have on the joint properties. The text amendment has been modified so that a special exception is required for multifamily developments greater than six units in the district that we discussed previously, and although they would be allowed by rights in the Understate National Use District, all multifamily of six units or less would be permitted by rights in the districts where they're located. The provision for the neighborhood meeting is an optional, made or encouraged for any project that requires public hearing, it would be required for any multifamily development that we've already discussed previously. The Planning Commission recommends the original application, the original application.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions with this quarter staff regarding this item? There are none. Council, are you ready to take action on this item?
Mayor, I would be adopted, special.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? There are none. All of the in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion passes. Please let the record in effect, Councilmember. Opposed. Thank you. Item Eight B is a special event application. Item Eight One is a request from the Perry Public Forest Commission for its ninth annual Perry Music Festival on September fifteenth, twenty eighteen, from two p.m. to midnight. Major Ellis.
Mayor and Council, the staff met at some event locations, which is at the West State of the Georgia National Fairground, and we recommend that this be approved.
Thank you, Major. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? There are none. Time one, I made a motion.
I make a motion that we approve.
Second. Any discussion? There are none. All of the in favor, raise your hand. Motion here's a hand. Thank you. Item Nine is any other, it's Nine A, is any other business from the mayor? None. Nine B, is any other business from council members? Mr. Jones. Mr. Walker. Mr. Jackson. Item Nine C, is any other business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Item Nine D, is any other old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Item Nine E, is any other old business from the city attorney, Mr. Waters?
Sir.
Item Ten, new business. Can I, or matters that have been referred from the August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen work session that was held last evening in the August twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen pre-council meeting? Mr. Gilmore, is anything coming out of either of those meetings we need to talk about, or something?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item Ten B, are resolutions for consideration and adoption. Ten B One, this is a resolution for the declaration of the official intent to reimburse the cost of acquiring vehicles and equipment with taxes and financing. Ms. King.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. The resolution that you have before you, this is standard resolution required by GM to participate in their lease purchase program, for the city to reimburse itself for the capital projects in the two thousand and thirteen project.
This is a standard item of the year, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you, Ms. King. Does any member of council have any questions, Ms. King, regarding this item? There are none. If you time one, I made a motion, we adopt the resolution to declare the official or intent for reimbursement of costs as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? There are none. All of the in favor, raise your hand. Motion here's a hand. Thank you. Item Eleven is the other business in the supplemental agenda. Eleven A is the chamber's request for tram service. That's the Perry Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your package is a request from the Perry Area Chamber of Commerce, in which it and the Perry Area Historical Society and the Perry Arts Commission are requesting that the council provide a driver in a full vehicle, a tractor or truck, on October twenty-third for a tram connection between the fairgrounds here downtown, and the administration would recommend to you, the tram itself would be provided by the county.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? There are none. If you time one, I made a motion, we approve the request by staff. The motion's a second. Second, any discussion? There are none. All of the in favor, raise your hand. Motion here's a hand. Thank you. Item Eleven B, for ordinances for the first reading and introduction. Eleven B One, this is the first reading of an ordinance that will revise the CD Code by modifying Chapter Seventeen, miscellaneous provisions and offenses, Chapter Nineteen, defenses, and Chapter Twenty-Two, solid waste, by reorganizing items related to litter, handbills, and advertising in the appropriate chapter, and modifying enforcement procedures. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. This request, as you, as you just read, takes into consideration our council's request that we look at modifying the procedures for code enforcement. That was discussed at a workshop a couple of meetings ago, and looking at the chapters, we realized that there is a lot of duplication between chapters of various items. duplication between chapters of various items related to litter, handbills, and advertising that need to be reorganized in the appropriate chapters that really appropriately function. We will also make modifications to the enforcement procedures on code enforcement to address what council's desires are regarding that process.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Thank you, sir. Council, this is the first reading that for more action is required at this time. Item eleven C, we are being asked to approve the health and dental insurance renewal quote received at Perry. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your package is a memo from me and the backup documentation about the renewal quote for our health and dental insurance. The administrative portion of that is going to increase eleven point five percent. Primary reason for that is the increase in health insurance costs and the amount that had been paid out for reinsurance in the last planned year. In addition to that, we are moving from two claimants who are lasered, which means a higher deductible individually for them, to four. Based on the situation with the market and current conditions, the administration recommends to accept this review.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion we approve the health and dental insurance renewal as described.
Certainly.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all of whom in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries on. Item twelve, for council member, Ms. Brown Grace? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mayor and council, with your adoption of the text amendment, we'd like to recommend to you that you adopt a resolution canceling out the moratorium on apartment combinations.
Council, what's your pleasure?
I completely cancel the renewal.
Is the motion canceled in the fourth, in the second?
Certainly.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all of whom in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, please let the record then take, the council. Any further, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Assistant city manager Smith, do you have any questions?
Oh, yes, Mayor, do you have one item? This Saturday, beginning at six-thirty, we will have our next installment of Saturday Cinema Series. It'll be at Creekwood Park. I'll have a cookout with Hot House hamburgers, and he'll be showing Moana when the sun goes down. Should be an excellent event. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney, Mr. Waters, do you have anything? Item thirteen are department head and staff items, Department of Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. Kim. Thank you. Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood.
Nothing, sir.
From the dual half so far, economic development, as well as assistant city manager, Mr. Smith.
Nothing, sir.
From Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Dye.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Police Department, Major Phillips. Fire Emergency Services, Chief Park.
Nothing, nothing, sir.
Thank you. Item fourteen, the general public items, does any member of the general public who wishes to address council at this time? Thank you. Item fifteen, the mayor items. I'd call your attention to the next event, or one of the events that we've got coming up, that's on the twenty-eighth of August, a week from tonight, at five-thirty, we'll have the next walk with mayor and council. It'll be in the Russian Creek subdivision area. I would encourage you to put that on the calendar and come out and speak to the mayor and council. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be on September third, five o'clock. No, it's not, that's later than that. We will not have a meeting on September the third. People here, buddy, you said hot. I'll get a hitch. That's what I understand. At any rate, September the fourth is a Tuesday, is the next time we regularly meet, five p.m. pre-council meeting will be upstairs in the conference room. Regular council meeting will be at six o'clock in this room as we are going tonight. This Thursday morning, the Robbins Regional Chamber of Commerce is having their monthly eggs and issues. I do believe Dr. Mark Scott, superintendent of the House of County Public School System, is going to be the speaker. He does a very good job. I would encourage your participation to hear what's going on with schools. That's all I have at this time. If nothing else is going before us, thank you for your interest and participation in this and the journey.